Yes.
They, they didn't say anything.
I showed up.
And they're like.
And I told her she followed me. You could look at her ear and then it's all right. Probably. Maybe we'll beat that. Too many things. And I thought, I just.
I'm getting.
Okay, in the back, if they've done work. But it doesn't. They were. And if you.
It was like, oh, bro. I hope they're not getting here and I think.
Yeah, you made my whole time for this work. And thank you for your thought. In game.
I don't know what to do.
I can't believe they don't. Right. I would say we pass it as. Okay. Says. Yeah. They advertise. We don't. Just have their. We did some advertising. We added some. So no action. It doesn't change. You know, I'm pretty good. Hot, thank you. Oh, Kevin. You don't or you're interested? No.
Thank you.
So you shouldn't. I asked you to take off his last. Yes, yes. I mean, it's. Or what? For that part, but not. How are you? It's. Enjoying the kids? Um, I did. Almost had a ride in here because the other day you weren't. They said wrong. Oh, yeah. I worked out. I don't. I don't. You don't like them giving me shit like that. Where'd they go? If they were riding because they wanted to go one more hour. We actually got back. Yeah, we. I don't know why I can't tell. I don't talk yet. Quite big, young, little. Love you, buddy. Give it a little more. Also. Come on. This is. He's got. He really has. We're lucky. When we first started going, shoot each other. Not when I have guns. I don't care. Just make sure it's possible. Okay, don't ruin it. Not gonna do that to you. I'm gonna start timing on target. No one ever give a little. Because he's, he's pretty whatever. Pretty laid back. Three minutes. You can go all day here, boy. Had a lot of education those first two.
I didn't wear blue.
What are you eating the other?
Can I go home? I didn't wear a sheet of blue.
Was that me? No, yes. Look, your tail. I know. It almost looked like we had.
Take off.
Glad you stand up. Well, I know. No, I thought. Good job. No, she got the. Yeah. I'll pray for days. That's right. Sweet woman. I mean, it was. You got us like a triangle. Four, four, three, four, three. Yeah, yeah. Turning the lights for theirs. Gee.
I don't like.
Well. Right. What?
So here.
He's. I mean, I could.
That's why you said, I'll pray for you.
I don't. If you need me, I'll take care of you, brother. Come on. I got it. I got it. Let's hear you. Hey, I don't care. Whatever, whatever you need, man. Say that again.
He does.
You what?
We're in this. It's not fair, bro. I can put him on the rotation, maybe Patrick. That's everything.
I don't like that.
Oh, it's me.
Cause every. Oh, I know. Yeah. This is. Are y'all ready?
No.
No. Well, we got a note. Okay, all right. I follow the regular session of the Levington City Commission to order. Shannon, roll call, please.
Mayor Roberts?
I'm here.
Mr. Trigillo?
Here.
Mr. Gane?
Here.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Please our invitation. Mr. Gane, you want to leave?
But. Much. Sorry. Let me bow your heads with me, please. Don't I follow, Lord, we just thank you for this absolutely beautiful day. Lord God, we thank you for your presence here. We thank you for the rain that we've received. We thank you for our citizens and their dedication to their community. We thank you for our employees, our staff, the different organizations that help make this city run. Lord God, we just, we lift each one of them up to you for their diligent work for this community. Lord God, I just pray for each one of the commissioners tonight that you would give them the foresight and wisdom to make decisions that affect this community in a positive manner. We thank you and we praise you. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join us in praise, Eliot.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
Babysitting. We have any changes to our agenda?
We do. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to the approved agenda with two removals.
Yes.
Action item, resolution 2025-048, approval of PSA between the city of Levington and Levington Main Street, and resolution 2025-049, approval of PSA between the city of Levington and the Lee County Museum.
Okay. The professional service agreement that is in there is not for the Levington Chamber, is for the EDC.
So we're gonna remove that one also?
Well, I can change the correction. Is that correct?
The number? Are you saying 46 is not?
If you go to the public, if you go to the PSA, it is stated in there for the EDC.
No. So we need to correct. The chamber needs to be 47 and the EDC needs to be 46? We're gonna need to go down here and figure out what the question is. Yeah. Give me a second.
The EDC, if that is. I think that's the case. Okay, we have the EDC and it's the PSA.
Chamber is 46 on here on the resolution.
Yeah.
Forty seven.
Chamber's 46 on the resolution. Oh, that's the one.
Forty six is chamber?
Forty six should be for the chamber. But the PSA agreement is EDC's.
Yeah, looks like EDC went into 46 and 47.
Correct. Oh, so the paperwork is.
Correct.
Right. Okay. We're just.
I can.
Voting on the.
I, I just wanted to make sure that it was.
Okay. We can, we can get that corrected.
Yes, sir.
And I have a copy of the chamber PSA.
Do you like the. Yes, sir.
So we, so you wanna regret, have the digital agenda corrected with the correct PSA for the chamber?
Correct.
That's missing this, we have the, okay, I'm with you now.
Yes, sir.
That don't make any sense with all the motions and gibbers I made. We're gonna need to start over.
Resolution 2025-046, paperwork needs to be corrected in the novice agenda.
Right.
Like the resolutions, right?
The chamber of commerce PSA.
Yeah, the EDC. Okay. Cause it's 47.
Are we talking about the attachments?
Yes. The resolution is the wrong one.
Yeah, I'll get the chamber one there.
But if we're all good with. Correction.
Thank you.
All good with corrections and reading in a good second. Forty seven.
I'm good with it. I'm confused a little bit, but I'm good with it. I know, I'm. Right. Shannon is the one we need to make sure.
Shannon, did I make my confusion correct?
Well, I think.
Clears my.
Yeah.
If I have anything I can, I can help you out with it too, so.
It's the attachment.
Correct. Yes.
Resolution's okay, it's the attachment.
Yes, ma'am.
The attachment for resolution 46 needs to be corrected.
Twenty twenty five. Yes.
All right. All right. We have a motion and a second for the agenda as corrected. Any further discussion? Hearing that, Shannon.
Mr. Trigillo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gane?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of the minutes, May 27th, 2025.
Question.
Thank you.
I'll second that with two corrections.
Okay.
On consideration of minutes, I'm sorry, on commission and staff report. When I was talking there, I made the comment that Main Street is now a single lane and it has single land. So, and the second one is on our adjournment. It states that Mayor Roberts adjourned the meeting.
That would be hard.
Mayor Roberts.
How did you do that?
So that needs to be corrected also. Other than that, I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for the, for the adoption of the minutes with the two corrections. Any further discussion? Sorry. Start over, get the whole thing. Okay. Hearing that, no discussion. Shannon?
Mr. Gane?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Trigillo?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
All right. Before we move on to our commission and staff report, I'd just like to thank Mayor Prossian, Commissioner Trigillo for covering for me at the last meeting. I appreciate it. Next time I'm gonna learn to look and see that it's a holiday on that Monday, not.
That's all right, you can just wonder if that's what you want. You can shoot. Just mark it on your little star, Kell.
There you go. Rip that gold star right off of there. Okay. Anyway, Ms. Shannon, do you have anything to see?
Not at this time.
Not at this time? Veronica, you have?
I do. Estimates for the roof and hail damage on all of our properties is in the process of being estimated. They have, the New Mexico Self Insurance Fund will be sitting down and assess her to come down and do their piece. And then we can forward that. We've got estimates on vehicle damage because it's gonna be a little more simple. We've got nine vehicles right now that need to, need to repair, but a few of them are still, they're older, so they actually probably would be more expensive to repair than to just need that biz windshield or a spice, so they're safe to drive. And then recruiting numbers are doing great. We've got 127 applicants over the last few weeks on the, on Indeed. And then we've had 17 walk-ins that came in and filled out applications or lost all the applications. So we've got, for the senior citizens, that have over 44 applicants for a part-time position. And then for code enforcement.
Forty four.
Code enforcement, we had seven applicants, new applicants for code enforcement, so. We're gonna get there. Any for mine? Actually, we didn't have one. I got it just by the. And she's bilingual, so.
Did you already run yours off?
Yes, I did.
I leave for a few days and it's. Hey, I was right, look.
It was not pistol.
There.
She, you know.
I am, I am without help again. Babysitting issues.
Well, you were obviously, had, had too much spare time, so. We had to take care of. All right. And thanks, Bertie, I'm sorry.
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief?
What's up? Mayor, Commissioners, and Manager. Officers' activities for the month of May is call the service was 1103, self-initiation calls was three, 421, 156 citations with 35 arrests. Code enforcement for the same month had code calls of 192, code warnings was 29, and code citations was 163. Well, we hired a certified officer last Monday. That puts us up to 121 officers on the roster, three are uncertified, and they're in training. And we have two other officers that's on light duty. Smoking on the plaza went off without any issues, major issues. The Flint Department is looking to put together a folder of the citizens of, citizens of special needs, like, like autism and Alzheimer patients. We had a small child, a three-year-old that was walking streets, so the nonverbal. So that's kinda concerning that we didn't know where this child belonged. So over the next two or three months, we'll be working on that, trying to get together and trying to pictures and merge the contact information so we'll be able to contact the family a little faster. And that's all I had.
Wow. Okay, questions? Questions? I have a question, and this comes about from about a week long of questions from the community, whatever. I've heard the governor's stance, I've heard the sheriff's stance, but if ICE comes into the city of Levington, would you describe how the Leving Police Department would be involved?
We'd be in security aspect of, we're not gonna be involved in rounding anybody up.
Right.
I've told numerous people that we're not in that, we don't have the federal authority, so we're not gonna be rounding anybody up. If they need security, like the LA scenario.
Right.
We'll be there to help, make sure everybody's safe from both sides of the situation. But that would be our primary position would be just security and if anybody need us, do anything.
Do, are you notified before their arrival?
I would say yes.
Okay.
I mean, the sheriff department notifies us because if you come into a community or jurisdiction and you get into some type of shooting and all of a sudden we're getting 911 calls, we would like to know ahead of time that they were in an area. I mean, repo guys call us, know, hey, we're working in this area, we're looking for this vehicle. Patrol investigators call us, in case you see me and they get calling some fish's vehicle, that's what I'm doing. So we should be getting calls. They shouldn't come in here secretly and not, it's not a cool deal, cause you never know. I mean, we may, if they're coming in plainclothes, blue on blue is a real thing. We don't know who they are and what they're doing.
But you're saying you should be, you don't know for a fact.
Well, I mean, the sheriff department, we've run up on them doing things in town, it's like, what y'all doing? So.
And that's, that's why I'm just.
Yeah, everybody.
In a, in a perfect world, you should be contacted, it should be made known. But it's just, and the reason I'm saying this for the safety perspective, that if you're not brought into the conversation, if you're not aware of it, just to be safe because, you know, and I know you will, but you, if you're not told, you don't know what to expect. And all of a sudden you hear that there's a report, 911 call.
Yep.
And, you know, that's why I said.
If we roll up and we see plainclothes individuals with guns, we don't know their.
Exactly.
Class.
Yeah.
So that's why the importance of letting us know you're actively working something in our community. in our community.
Right.
Well, I would like to comment that the, basically, you nearly verbatim said the same thing that the sheriff said. And this is not because I want to know or whatever it is, to let the community know what our involvement is, how, you know, basically, we have nothing to do with what they were doing. That was the governor the other night, basically said, I don't know, you know, they don't let me know, there's nothing I can do. So, they're, they're obviously in our area, gonna be for a while, but I just want the public to know, we're gonna be there to help the public and them in keeping it peaceful if they're inside the city limits. I just wanted you to say that out loud so that...
Yeah. And I've told, I haven't been told anything different, that if they are targeting criminal individuals. Now, if they sweep up other people around, they're gonna interview everybody that's there. So, other people that's not criminals happen to be illegal aliens and they're gonna get swept up too.
But we also want people to feel comfortable to call law enforcement if they're threatened or in danger or something like that because they're not gonna question their status.
No, no, we don't do that. That's not, we have no authority to do that.
Basically, victims are protected...
Yes.
...by the DA's office.
Yeah. They needed to let us know is they are a victim of a crime.
Yes.
So, we know. I mean, we don't, we don't, we don't check their status. We don't even ask them. Only if arrest report may come back, if you answer all the boxes, where we born, town, and then, I mean, that could come back. I got family members that's born in Mexico, but they're not illegal, so...
Right.
Just because you're born in another country doesn't mean that you have to be worried. I mean, I know people who are citizens that are worried. It's like, oh, it's just another law enforcement agency, just don't do anything stupid.
Yeah, that's the key. I mean, we realize that they're here and if they're doing their, their normal routine, going to school, going to work, you know, obeying the city laws and driving and different things like that, they shouldn't have anything to worry about. Now, if you venture off and you get a DWI and you do something stupid like driving the wrong machine or to go down a path that wasn't, if you're just going to Bob's to get groceries, you got nothing to worry about.
We're not gonna random traffic stop.
No.
If you find yourself in Lake County Jail and you have that status, then you played your card.
Yeah, you will, you will be deported.
Yep, probably will.
No, you will be. I know from experience of... Oh, little friend, got you, yes.
You know, I just want to say, I think the media just plays a factor and all this propaganda is just messing everything up. I remember, I'm just gonna show my age real quick, I remember back in the seventies, my dad was...
God, you are old, aren't you?
Yeah. And it was just random, you know what I mean? Graves on Lake County, they were making them everywhere, you know, and it was just, you know, it was just random. I mean, we just, it was acceptable, I mean, back then. But the media is just, they just wanna talk, they'll film for an hour and one little second out of that hour that somebody's doing something wrong, one side of the propaganda will get the other side will get going, and it becomes a political thing, more of a justice thing. So, I just, I just see that a lot. So, I don't comment.
Well, in addition, and that's something I was gonna actually ask the our newspaper media that's here, you know, I know, I did this so that everybody gets an understanding of how the city of Lovington Police Department and all the staff are involved. And just, if you write something, just put in there that we're, you know, that the Lovington Police Department is gonna be, could be on side, but their job is to make sure that nothing happens to either side. So, anyway, that was, I'm just trying to get the word out is all we're trying to do. We appreciate it, yes. There's not a person in our town that I know of, and I'm not saying there's not one, that isn't affected by this some way, you know, whether it's workers, whether it's workers' families, whatever it is, somebody's gonna be, could be involved in this that is friends or families or our staff or anybody else. So, we just need to, everybody needs to keep calm head about them under whatever circumstances are.
Would you be willing to say that the workload that we have already is pretty much taking a majority of your time and that would be an interest that would involve more time than we don't have?
Very much so.
All right, any further... Party!
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, so we have recruitment testing this coming Friday. Hopefully, you can get some new hires out of that. Our academy is in their fourth week and they have approximately nine weeks left after this week. We have one EMT basic who passes National Registry and is now an intermediate. And our numbers for May, total EMS runs, two fifty-two, interfacility transfers, fifty-four, cancel refusal DOA was sixty-six, sixteen airport, ten table. We only had one paramedicine patient and we had eighteen fire calls. So, other than that, that's all I have at this time.
All right.
You know, your vehicle's fixed.
I don't have any damage.
No, that one they got backed up into you?
Oh, that one was fixed. A couple of them.
Okay, we're getting close, so bring us up to date on the fireworks. And I apologize, if you talked about it last meeting, I apologize.
So, the fireworks have been ordered, same show as last year. As far as the drought proclamation, it will be in the resolution, we can discuss it then or it's, we put it in there for y'all to vote on, but it's, we have no support for it, so...
Okay.
We, I don't even support it.
It's too late to pass it later if we don't pass it.
Yeah, it's just too late, we are presenting it, so y'all have the option to do what y'all wanna do.
Right. I know we're at that, that critical spot.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bolt?
Yes, thank you for being here today.
Oh, I appreciate it.
Thank you, city staff, people in the public. I appreciate y'all being there, taking time out. As always, shop local, buy local, eat local. I appreciate that also, that helps out our community. Two weekends ago, Main Street put on a smoking on the plaza. And if you didn't attend it, you missed out. Good crowd there, a lot of people, good food. I actually, myself and my, my wife and myself got to be judges for some of the food and the ribs were delicious. We didn't have any dessert. I was out walking around and they already had people taking the spots, so missed out on that. Again, shout out to Lovington Main Street, that was a really good, really good showing Friday and Saturday. Lot of people, lot of crowds, so hopefully, everybody had a good time. Again, thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
I'm good, sir.
All right. Commissioner White? Commissioner Gaines?
He didn't say it, but I will. We got a new street, shop local. Burn that bad boy up, drive up and down, up and down, you know? Figure out what the new parking signs mean, couple of different things like that. But I did have a thought the other day that just affected me because had a flashback or whatever they call that old age thing where you go back to your youth. And so, as I come into town, I noticed that, you know, the road pinched down, the road was nice and smooth. And I got to thinking that there's a lot of new stuff that wasn't here before. People say, there's nothing new in Lovington. Apparently, they're not driving up and down Main Street. There's new businesses, there's new buildings, there's lots of different things. There's new construction going on. It's been impressive to watch over the last few years how many things have changed. But we just given that damn that nothing's changed, but it has. There's lots of great things in this community and you should tell the people that. So, I encourage you to shop local, like Mr. Bolt always says, and to enjoy the new things we have in town in support by shopping local, those things. And I guess we should thank the people that did the street that took for... Oh, wow. It's great, though. I mean, it's really smooth. It handles the water better than I assume, given those are probably some still some tweaks or whatever, but I am thoroughly impressed with the construction and different things like that, so I'm glad we have a new Main Street.
The dip at Washington and the dip at Jefferson...
Yeah.
Being gone, I mean, I've never, never experienced that in the time I've been.
And it really wrecked my motorcycle riding because I used to just... And you, you know, but now I have to go down Love Street, you know, the cops are over there.
Jump the speed bump?
Yes. There's some issues I have to go through, but, yeah, it is a quite different ride than what it used to be.
You can't go through and soak the cars around the other side.
Can't drown the people walking down the sidewalk.
I know, right?
What a disappointment in life.
Exactly.
All the things we grew up with are gone.
I'm just taking every little breath with joy.
Oh, you want us to speed up, do you? We must move forward.
All right.
How do you think tonight?
All right, thank you. Huh, City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, first off, I'd like to apologize for the errors in the agenda packet. There's been too many errors going out lately. The commission and the public have a right to get accurate packets to review, so we're gonna address that so it won't happen as much in the future. I have a lot of discussion and action items, so very briefly, I'll just let you know that the Youth Center Summer Program is fully registered at fifty-one and we've had to turn away some people. And last week, we installed four doggy waste stations, three in Chaparral Park and one in Avenue D Park, so that should make the park experience a little better for everybody. And we had to take off two resolutions for some service organization PSAs. We'll try to iron out some last-minute details that'll be on for the next meeting. And besides some other things, we'll have some discussion on the truck ordinance as well, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions? Looks like it's gonna be a good night. All right. Ms. Ball?
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners, so just trying to keep up with the roofing permits, carport permits, everybody's on the re-roof, do the roof and redo the carports or build the carport.
Or build the carport, yes.
Yeah, and, you know, they come in and they...
I've been sending them your way right and left.
I know, they're there all day long, cannot catch a breath. I processed over two-hundred-and-one roofing permits since the twenty-eighth, which was just about nine days ago.
Too wild?
I am swamped with permits. I'm running about a day behind on emails, just trying to keep up. Of course, then you have people that walk in that want the immediate permit, and it's like, you have to do some paperwork yourself, so... But no, it's a, it's a moving process, it's definitely time consuming.
On that subject, can you explain a homeowner's permit and a contractor's permit for doing a roof? Can a homeowner's permit do their roof or not? So, I had that question.
So, a homeowner can pull a homeowner's permit if they live in the home that they are pulling the permit for. So, like, if you own several homes, you can only pull a permit for the one you live in. You're not allowed to pull it for your rental homes, you must have a contractor do those roofs. But you can pull a homeowner, and that's what I help people do, I help them get the proper paperwork, so when they submit to the state, they can get that homeowner's permit.
I just wanted to be sure I was corrected.
Yeah.
I did, I've been telling people, go seek a homeowner's permit, that saves them money right there.
It does, but there's a lot of stipulations.
Yeah, there's a lot of stipulations for a homeowner's pull a permit. They have to sign an affidavit to the state that they're actually working as their own contractor, they're not hiring anyone else to do the work.
Right.
And if they do, they have to pay those wage rates, they have to keep that information. There's a lot of stipulations to that.
Workers comp, they have to make insurance, there's a lot to that.
They have to have insurance, if someone gets hurt on their scene, they would be liable for that, yeah. There's a lot to pulling a homeowner's permit, and that's why we give them those documents and tell them, please read them and understand what you're signing. And if they have any questions, I'm always willing to help them.
Good. Thank you, Chris.
But it can be done.
It can be done, yes. And I can assist you because it is confusing.
They wanna jump up there and help you?
Get a tan.
For sure.
Someone's got tan there, boss. You turn red.
So, I will have a resolution at the next meeting. We did receive the LGRA grant, which was to resurface Fifth Street from Central to Jefferson. It's there where the schools and the WIC Center is and the school's office and the school's health offices and stuff are, Central to Jefferson there on Fifth Street. It's been in really bad shape for a long time, so we did get the grant to resurface that, so we'll be doing that one. I'll be trying to get that resolution.
Try to get it done before the school starts?
Yeah, yeah, I'll have the resolution in and then we'll use a CES contract and we'll get that done this summer.
Oh, why, you don't have to work that. You don't work like this.
Well, if it doesn't, it's gonna be a nightmare.
No, I wanna get it done before school starts, yeah. Well, I'll have that resolution in because as soon as I get the resolution and get it back to the state, then I can hire the CES contractor and get it done.
Thank you. Counselor?
Mayor, Commissioners, don't have anything new. I've been reviewing, weeks ago, when I got it from Evelyn, just kind of working through it, so once I've had a chance to get, get it sorted out, we'll do a full session on that to discuss. I may have a few comments on some of the agenda items, but I'd be happy to stand for any questions if you have some.
Questions? None yet?
All right.
All right, moving on, thank you, sir. Bring us to our public comment time. This time, anyone in the audience can come forward, please come to the podium, announce your name, tell us what you'd like us to hear, and try to keep it under three minutes. Mr. Gaines is putting me to task on the three minutes, so... I got you. All right. No one's standing, I'm moving on if, all right. I don't see anybody jumping.
Count to three, one, two, three.
Got it, moving on. All right, brings us to non-action items. Mr. Miranda, discussion of the water conservation ordinance. I'm sure this will be a very popular topic.
And very boring. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I wanted to bring before you a topic that we've covered before, I think it's been a couple of years. And as you see, some of this is a little tedious, some of it you already know, so I apologize in advance. Basically, the reason we're revisiting this is because the need for a water conservation plan, very simply, various state funding agencies of the state of New Mexico require that a municipality have a water conservation plan ordinance on the books to be able to apply for water infrastructure project funding, which we need help with. That's the actual statute and the law, it was enacted in two thousand and five, that says certain entities will not even look at your application if you don't have this ordinance on the books. This is not to be confused with an ordinance we do have on the books, which is emergency water restrictions. In red, you can see that if something drastic happens, the city manager, by direction of the mayor, can declare a water emergency. But this is not that, this is something else, this is something that we're going to effect every summer, so this would be an additional ordinance. So, our snapshot is the city of Lovington owns a total of six thousand and seventeen acre feet per year of water rights for municipal use. We rely on seventeen water wells for our usage, and you'll see that some of them, a good portion of them are fifty years old. By Shoemaker's study, you'll see that our aquifer in the southern well field, which our seventeen wells are located in, loses almost a foot a year. So, it's not gonna be there permanently. As you can see in the lower right-hand portion of this map, those are where the seventeen wells are located. Up in the city limits, there are a lot of wells that aren't used anymore. And you can see that, you know, we sit at about thirty-eight-hundred feet above sea level and our wells go down about two-hundred-and-fifty feet on average. And if you look here, this is a breakdown of our current wells, you'll... You'll see a lot of them, well, you'll see here they're deaf. But you'll see a lot of them are from the 60s, almost more than half. And the last one to be drilled was in 2011, and the last couple to be drilled were in 2011. So this most definitely is aging infrastructure. The city of Lobington uses over 1 billion gallons of potable water each year. And as you can see here.
Did you say billion? Sorry, did you say billion?
Yep.
Over a billion gallons.
Okay, just want to make sure I heard you right.
Yes, sir, with a B. And as you can see, we peak in August and we trough in December, January. But as you can see here, this is not an anomaly. This is when in June of '23, and I remember because it was the first month that was interim city manager, we had a series of breaks and we asked the town to voluntarily curb, and the schools to curb water use. And it did have a drastic effect. And then the latest period, you'll see a drop going into the summer. And that is, we believe, because of all that rain we had. So you'll see that a lot of our water usage is not critical water usage. It's recreational or, you know, things that are not necessities. Now, we're not saying people shouldn't have water to wash their cars or their lawns, et cetera. But the Shoemaker study said that we need to implement a water conservation plan. So I looked at surrounding communities and kind of to give the commission. The commission feels this is something we should do possibly. This is to help you give me guidance to formulate a plan which can vary. And you'll see that there's slight differences in our surrounding communities. We'll take Hobbs first. And you'll see that Hobbs, they designate a water conservation plan that begins the 15th of May. Every year goes through September 15th of each year. And they go by even number street addresses and even calendar days. Odd number street addresses and odd calendar days for months of 31 days, no one more, or some of the 31st. And they further dictate or state what times you should water on your appropriate day. That's what Hobbs does.
Before you move on, though, because two years ago, when we looked at this, and at that time Laura Brock brought it before us, there, I just want to bring this up because I did a lot of studying. That no watering on the 31st day is a problem because all of our timers, if you have a sprinkler system, you can set even odd, but you cannot exclude the 31st.
That's true.
So people, by general nature, set even and odd or set it even and odd. Are we, or we're gonna, you know, no matter what, they're probably going to be watering on that day.
Yes, sir. That will screw up everybody's timers. I have the same thing. I know exactly what you're talking about. And we'll see in another municipality, there's kind of an alternative to that.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up before we got further on.
That's one point. I appreciate that. So they kind of keep the watering hours to the early morning and the late evening. Then they call water wasting activities, and obviously the wrong day. Letting the water run down the street. And then they said washing your vehicle structures, driveway sidewalks with an open hose or with a spray nozzle attached to an open hose, and then failing to report a leak. Artesia does it a little bit differently. They require you to have an automatic shut off on your nozzle, on your hose. Their period of time is April, I forget the day in April, I'm sorry, and then October 31st. And you can only water between 7:00 PM and 11:00 AM. And then they kind of build in there that they can require customers to only water one or two or three times a week. So they kind of give themselves a little discretion to kind of amp it up if things get bad. Interesting one is Roswell. They've actually declared wasting of water to be a public nuisance, which allows them enforcement powers. And like the rest of them, they call, you know, unnecessary water flowing down the street, highway, gutter, alley. Washing your vehicles must be equipped with a positive shut off nozzle, like most of us have. And then obviously leaks. Interesting thing about Roswell, they specify about new building projects for the low-flow showers. But they exclude low-flow toilets, which I thought was interesting because they say due to the decreased water flow in existing sewer lines, creating sulfuric acid and corroding the existing lines. They don't mandate the low-flow toilets. So I don't know if that's scientifically accurate, but it's in their ordinance. So again, Shoemaker says that we don't have a city water conservation ordinance. But they took a survey, I guess, of our citizens. And they said that a lot of citizens would be in support of some kind of a water conservation ordinance. And then I've included what their recommendations specific to Lobington could entail. Again, we can craft our own ordinance. It can be Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Fridays for the evens. It can be Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays for the odds. But one thing is different than it was two years ago. Two years ago, I think one commissioner brought up, we don't want to be hypocrites, right? We don't want to have our citizens try to conserve water while the city's wasting water. But we don't have our act together in terms of our water system. So what's different from two years ago? Number one, the city has fixed its water rate billing procedures, as we all know, which have increased revenues, but they've also cut down on water usage. The city has begun a plan of systematically replacing water meters, starting with the high-volume commercial customers. So our new camstruck meters not only are much better at monitoring low-flow usage, but they have better leak detection technology. The city's also been actively exploring potential new areas for water wells to move our dependence away from the southern well field, which is reducing every year, to create redundancy and better capacity in our aging system. So if the commission directs me to, I will try to come up with some options for a future meeting to have some kind of a water conservation ordinance on the books so we can go after funding from the Water Trust Board and other state agencies for big water system improvements, infrastructure improvements that we have to make. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Questions, Commissioner? I have one statement that I would like to add it to this list. We have implemented in this same timeframe a much more aggressive water leak repair, detection. I mean, there were times, we were growing moss on a lot of those water leaks. And it was simple, it was easy to literally drive down the street and see the same one. And our new aggressive approach has saved a lot of water and taken the wastefulness out of the common ice.
I agree, Mr. Mayor, a point. An example of that would be the leak on Frontage Road by the cheese plant. That used to be a permanent fixture and that was a couple of blocks long. So yeah, it's things like that that we've been going after aggressively. So we feel the city's been doing its part, so we're not going to be hypocritical by trying to put an ordinance on the books. And it's to the benefit of the city in getting better chances of funding from the state because we all know our water infrastructure needs to be systematically replaced and upgraded.
I'd like to point out our staff, our staff has, plays the biggest role in that. You can tell anybody all day what to do, but if you have a good staff, they take care of business. And I believe you have a good, a good department, a sound department. And you can see, you can tell the difference.
Thank you.
I know that the whiteboard, you know, that was where we had all of our leaks. And it may not be completely empty, but it's not multiple columns either. So that's, again, I'm with the Commissioner of you. Just want to commend everyone for staying on top of it. Repairing correctly, I mean, instead of just Band-Aid that wasn't working, anyway, so.
And having backup parts on the shelf helps a lot, too. So we thought we, we had a 16-inch leak right across from Booster 2 on the commercial, crossed them apart last week. The part would have been five days out from New York. Luckily, we had a proper collar on the shelf and the city had the best part. It was repaired within a day.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Brings us to our next non-action, non-action item. Again, the city manager and Ms. Bolt. Discussion of the proposed ICIP list for fiscal year '26. It is upon us.
It is, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the packet I provided over the weekend. Ms. Bolt, Mrs. Bolt did incredible amount of work on this. As you know, every year, the city management and department heads, you know, from input, give some recommended projects through Capital Outlay for the coming fiscal year. A lot of times, these have to do with infrastructure, equipment, police cars. So it is totally up to the city to, to the commissioners, excuse me, to rank them. Obviously, normally the top five are most important. Also, what Mrs. Bolt did is she went through our rather extensive ICIP list that has grown over the years. And you'll see on a later, a later chart, some proposed removals just to clean up our list so it doesn't confuse the legislators, it doesn't confuse the public, it doesn't confuse you, something that's been hanging out there for years that should be off the list, so. Obviously, we have to vote on this at the next meeting, but we just wanted to put it out there ahead of time for your input, your rankings, what you feel is important. Some of our department heads are here tonight to probably pitch for their topics. I'll point out that number four, the street sweeper and bucket truck, are two asks that were denied last year. Mr. Gutierrez is here. I'll just say that, you know, his street sweeper is $400,000. He's $375,000. For a new one, his current one has been breaking down. It's a 2009 model. And then obviously, there's a lot of asks for water and wastewater. And then the fifth one, although it doesn't mention it by name, that is the Denton Building. We have six HVAC units up there. Three of them aren't working. The roof is leaking in multiple places. It is a city building. It houses the city core, color enforcement, and the Chamber of Commerce. And it's a pretty big building, so Leslie and I thought that that was pretty important to put on there. You have the animal services facility, which is ongoing, and other projects. But it's for you to give your input and what you feel is important.
Questions? I know, not at this time, but we will have them in.
Two weeks we'll revisit it?
Yeah, but we've got to adopt it in two weeks, correct? So we probably need to have, when would you like input into the office?
Anytime.
Okay.
Anytime.
Want to give us?
What you feel is important. If you want to each rank what you feel is important in that order, then we can.
The next slide's the ones that we were going to remove.
Right.
Commissioner Bolt has a question, too, so.
So there's the one.
Let me ask before you guys go any further. You mentioned number four with the street sweeper bucket truck.
Yes, sir.
That's been breaking down and having issues with it. Phase ready, it says no. What do you mean by phase ready?
Well, that's a purchase. Mr. Gutierrez, how long would it take to get? I know we've quoted two different models.
Yes, Mayor Commissioners. On one particular model, if we was to ask for it today, it would take them 10 to 12 months to build it for us. And so if we go with the other company that makes and produces more sweepers, we might be able to get it in three months. And so the ones that we can get in three months, with that one, obviously, we do have personnel that would come over and help us work on it, get the parts a lot more faster. If we was to go with the one that I actually have right now, I do have a hard time even getting parts for it. And even, I only have Slavok. And last time that he got broke down on us, it took them about four months for me to get that machine back. But then again, you know, we are in a position, as a director, you know, from the street department, I am in a position where whatever it is that you guys give me, I'll take because I shouldn't want to be without a, without a street sweeper.
So what's the difference in price between the one that's three months, four months out compared to a year and a half?
Yeah, so about $75,000 that we're looking at.
More or less?
Yes, sir, more. It's more. And the, obviously, the one that is more expensive. And the reason I want to go with that one is because that one is a non-CDL sweeper. That one's a four-wheeler compared to what I actually have right now. It's a three-wheeler, which, you know, again, it's been, it's been a decent street sweeper. But our city is growing. And even sometimes whenever we have accidents or on the Hopps Highway, the three-wheeler only goes up to 25 miles an hour tops. And the four-wheeler that I am asking that one can move up to 60 if we need to. And so it is, it is a major, you know, difference in all of that. But then again, it's kind of like they say, sometimes the cheaper might not be better. It's just whatever works best for the city.
So here's another thing to think about for his street sweeper. This is, this is our project list for FY 2027. So this will not even go into, we'll have to present this to the legislator, the state legislator, and then see if they approve this and then possibly get funding for around August 2027. Once the new finance director comes in, we can perhaps redo the capital projects budget and we may have some funding available to get the street department their street sweeper more quickly than putting it on this projects list. So if you want to move it down on the list, we can do that and possibly get it funded through our own capital projects fund. Don't know where it's at.
I feel like that should be a budget item. And also, once you remember, you have to have two to three denials this year before Outlay will even talk to you. So you've got to find a place to go and say, hey, will you buy us a street sweeper three times and get denials? So remember that because they're not going to just hear it as fresh news and go with that.
And I prefer the more expensive one. The CDL's the seller for me. And non-CDL, I know it's hard to get a CDL driver, but if you have, you know, somebody can drive it other than a CDL driver, that'll save us the $75 within a five-year period or the $4 or $3.
You are definitely correct on all of that. And really, you know, it helps us out because let's say my sweeper operator is soft or weak than somebody that is trained. It's me that I've been messing with all of that, you know, I agree with your point. I do prefer the better one, obviously, but like I said, you know, it is up to you guys, you know, to see what we could get.
Well spoken.
Any detail? I don't know how much this is.
And you have a packet, a blue packet. So the removals, there's quite a bit that projects have been either fully funded or completed and we're not going to be, we're going to be able to see it on the screen. But in your packet, and there are some when they leave. But according to the Capital Outlay Bureau that they have with DFA, we do not need them on our ICIP plan. If they've been fully funded, they are not in our five-year plan, which means we're not going out for that. So we've removed quite a few items. We can put them in there if you feel like they need to be put back in there. So those are our draft removals in your packet. And then this would be the projects that are left. This is the top 10. And again, this is subject to your, what you are thinking needs to be ran. I put a little. I put a little caption, a little couple lines of what the project is and the purpose of them, and you may see that also in your packets.
And I think, Leslie, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, of the five asks, we were approved for three. But it wasn't just us, it was across the board, so we weren't being punished.
So the top three are all water or wastewater, which are, that and roads are critical infrastructures. And we are halfway through the top three projects. So, for example, North Love Sewer Lift Station is funded to date $500,000. The components actually have been ordered, approved and ordered for reimbursement, and we're still $525,000 short on that project.
That project doubles in a year and a half.
So we have, that's what we're estimating that we're going to need to finish that project. Wastewater Treatment Plan upgrades, we funded that for 1.7 million to date. We have submitted our application with EPA, it's still under review. We're hoping that that will be a positive outcome. We got some New Mexico match grant funding for that. We also have some other funding in Capital Outlay, and we're still $1,071,000 short on that. And then rank number one is the water system expansion planning, which Mr. Miranda went into about we need to have some redundancy in our water system and explore options to increase our water system.
And the clean water plan, we're supposed to start doing wastewater, this year, too, so you might go to them for some of that for a note, or they might give you the yes and you can use that spot.
So we've already tried that, and we have been denied.
So there's one.
Exactly, and it wasn't our ICIP.
We're happy we got denied.
Yes, so we're really hoping that we get funded for this. The Water Trust Board, of course, a lot of that is, has not grant funded, it's loan funded, so we're really hoping that we have a solid plan for expanding our water system. The Denton Building, of course, is one of the other buildings that needs to be upgraded in service and security. Animal Services Facility, it's going to be very difficult if I.
I was going to ask, is that a typo, or?
That is not a typo.
Somebody pipe dreams.
That is, that is not a typo, and you have the, you have the figures in your blue packet.
It's in the truck.
So, 875 is funded to date, and that's pre-phase one, modular shelter, modular structures. We went out for procurement on that, and we got approval, and we're ordering the shelters, and then we'll go out for RFP for construction of that. The next phase is 20, yeah, 21 million, and then 20 million on and on. ADA Complaint Sidewalks is in the downtown area, and that, again, project is, has funding. The south side of Avenue A is funded with some help from the city, and to complete that project, we are, we're still looking at close to a million for that. But again, the project is, we've got the design plans, we've got half of it funded, we're just going out for the other half for the funding of that. And then rebuild lift stations three and five, I had a brief conversation with Robert, and he can tell you more about his things, because it's a lot of water, and I didn't really think that amount of 67 was correct to rebuild those two lift stations. Probably missed a couple zeros on that. And then the cellar dryer, which he said is still a critical infrastructure. So that's the top 10 that we identified, again, you can see mostly all water, and finishing out projects that are half-funded. And then here's the next, group 17. Of course, the City White Street rehabilitation, planning and zoning are getting, I think all the funding's getting a little tight, we might want to move that up the list, you might think about that. The brush truck is for, is an additional brush truck. Again, you can see that's from 2029, so that's two to three years down the road. Then some reconstruction projects that were from the other ICIP, Lee Theater Rehabilitation, that's on the list, but it is, looks like it's going to be completely funded. Playground Equipment was on the old ICIP list, and then we added Early Childhood Center for a cost of $3 million to pursue going into the future.
Oh, the balance, so on Main Street, Crystal, where is that going to factor, where do we stand there, or where are we going to seek the remaining revenue to make that balance zero?
Um, yeah, that's.
1.3?
Uh, no, we don't know that much.
That's good.
I sent you that email, I thought I'd have to hear that cost.
I'll just.
No, it's, it's under a million.
We have four years.
And we have the four years, so that's where, like, that's where, in our budget, we need to start setting aside those funds to, so we're not stuck with that at the end of that four years.
Well, the reason we could use that, only that one.
Yeah, yeah, four years, we can come back quick.
Correct.
That's what I'm worried about, I want to make sure that we're, I don't want to stiff out the whole.
The number keeps changing.
None of us will be.
Well, it's not officially out yet.
Yeah, that's why I said we.
Final walk, they haven't done the final walk.
Yeah.
We need a finite number.
But I know our cost hasn't changed over in the last six months of the last part of the project, and we don't see any other changes coming to our part, so we're still under a million. I think it's 700 and some thousand, that's what we got.
It's considerably less than what we were, from a couple of years?
Yeah, a couple, yeah.
It was over a million.
Well, we've made a couple of large payments on it.
Oh, okay.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, and then there was a 400 and something.
There was a, there was a Capital Outlay request two years ago that, that they funded for 423.
Yeah, that was one.
We have that reauthorized, because we can use it on the water lines. It wasn't actually for the road itself, it was the water.
It was, well, it was for the main, the historic Main Street Rehabilitation Project, so.
And the water line is the project.
That was what we could pay for.
Right. That's all we had to pay for.
So, but we can't pay the other stuff without.
It's, it's all the same. It was on our, it's all the same.
We had to get major permission to switch that to that, and they said, they said that you can't use that money to pay for that.
That was one of our top five last year, and it was denied. So we had that on our ICIP list, and I believe it was number three or four.
Yeah, what was the amount, do you remember?
It was 1.1 million. And the three projects that we did get approval for was $500,000 for the youth center. We did get a judder truck, a hydro vac trailer, and.
Hydro vac.
Hydro vac trailer.
Zack truck and judder.
Yes, so three, of course, for water and wastewater.
Since we're on the subject of Main Street, on that, can we make that item six somewhere to nip it, like 250,000 or something?
Yeah, like putting in so much every year.
Yeah, I would say number six should be something.
What you want a budget for, just in our, in our budget, instead of asking whoever.
I just worry about our GRTs, I don't want to take from her.
So we have the capital projects account that we've put in, and we normally get about 1.2 million a year from our GRT to put into capital projects. It was an additional tax that was added, and once Ed comes in, we were looking at sitting down and reviewing that budget and putting in some of the loan repayments for Main Street Reconstruction into that, and then finishing some of the projects that got approved, too.
I know that when I was working on the grants at one time, as far as the Main Street was concerned, when I looked at the, at the way that they had it mapped out, and we were asking that year, that was just one of the phases, phased amounts that we asked for. That was one of the phase amounts for 2026, so that's why we asked for that amount, was I wondered how it went. So, but I do remember when we were in front of Mr. Pettigrew, he had mentioned somewhere about calling the state of settings and everything. So we'd ask him some questions about, because Randy called us, thinking for us, or calling somebody about the, about the amount that we owe.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I personally would feel more comfortable than when we taking care of old business and then bringing new business, because I don't want this old business coming up and biting us. Two years from now, and all of a sudden, we're still 750, and then we're trying to scramble, and then GRTs are down, or something's down. Right now, we're in a good position to take care of old business, and I like to, it makes me feel comfortable moving forward, spending money when we.
I'd be more than happy to budget 250 for it every year for the next four years.
On item six, or.
If we, if we charge it into our capital projects budget, for 250 for this FY 26, we could also put it on this west, and that may go down to less than half a million, if you wanted to add it up to one of the, one of the left.
I think it should be on one of the top ones, getting rid of, but it's, because it's a debt, that's the only reason, it's not, it's not, we're requesting, we're requesting new funding, but this is a debt, and we've got to eliminate debt, that was.
The clock starts ticking in about two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
So where would you want to put it on that?
I think like, line item six, if we got our top five, we're going to put it on number six. I mean, that, I mean, it's up to the board to make that decision, but I mean, that's what I'm.
We'll create a, and then you guys can rank them next time, or between now and then? Any ideas outside of what's on the 17 items here that we didn't consider or think that the Commission feels might be important?
Quality of life item, you'll get asked about that again?
Such as?
I'm just saying, he asked you directly about that last year.
Who did?
Pettigrew, when we were discussing your funding at Outlay Day.
So are you wanting to put, what exactly project are you thinking for quality of life?
Quality of life, you have your multi-use trail park deposit.
No, no, I just, I got tickled, the sidewalk to nowhere, yeah, I like that place. I'm just looking.
Did you look at that plan, like, there was those little mini pretty spots and stuff?
Yes, so Crystal has asked to put that on the ICIP, because she, the plans, Crystal, you know that, so the plans have been done for that project, so we can move that up if you like.
And they boosted the rec, my niece, you could ask for that, that there first.
But we can do it for, there's, there's a couple different, there's outdoor equity funds, there's.
Outdoor recreation.
No.
Tourism, tourism, they boosted tourism.
We have the Trails Plus Grant right now. We have already gotten a half a million for the Trails Plus for our two shelters that are coming in, and we're going to be asking for Chaparral Park to widen our trail path that way and to replace the picnic shelter.
So the downtown pretty spots could do tourism, you can, you can ask tourism for those.
For the New Mexico.
On that 2014 plan, the pretty spots, like on the corner and stuff, you can ask tourism money for those.
I think it's fair, yeah, I think it's fair to say that we received a million dollars in what could be termed quality of life in the past year, half a million for the youth center, which could be a splash pad or playground equipment, and half a million dollar for the Chaparral structure project, so.
But you haven't done anything with it, and we'll see that.
The structures are on their way.
Yeah, well, that part.
The youth center not yet, because it was involved in some other negotiations, but.
The youth center will be, and the funding for that is going to be FY 26, so the agreements have not even come in on that. So we're looking at that as a project that's FY 26.
We'll be ready, we'll spend it.
And I think this about the Capital Outlay is, so anything that's a constructive project that we're looking at, they basically give you four years. If it's an equipment purchase, we have exactly two years. So those projects are a lot quicker to be done, so we really, once we get the paperwork, we'll start on getting the stuff for water and wastewater in right away. And then we'll have four years for the planning and development and the construction of the youth center, Capital Outlay money, so.
Appreciate all your feedback in the coming days.
Okay, the NMBOT, on April 30th, just is when I had a state that we still owed the $961,713.63 for the water line portion of the project.
All right, brings us to the next discussion, repurposing the former city swimming pool. Mr. Mayor and Mr. President.
Mayors, Commissioners, we just wanted to bring it before you. Robert and I have been, he's come to me with some ideas. As you know, we have two city swimming pools, or former swimming pools. We have the one on East Gum Street, originally built in the 1960s, closed, has a pool over 20 years ago, and then the newer swimming pool, which is also not being used, opened in 2016 at a cost of $1.4 billion, it's been closed since 2019. As you will see, these properties have become vandalized, stripped of copper and other valuable equipment. The issue with swimming pools in general, and these two, is the location. I've heard it since I've been here, that one inch, the northeast corner of Chaparral is a little bit out of the way for a lot of city residents, it's hard to walk to, maybe bike to. Obviously, the costs that were involved, staffing is a tremendous cost, maintenance is a cost. Current condition, as you see, is not great, the unstable foundation, so I am told that it started having problems almost from the beginning. And finally, most cities, or many cities, are moving away from pools to having more splash pads. This is our East Gum Street Pool, which is wide open, unsecure, so that's a problem we need to mitigate immediately. That is a liability for the city. That's where the pool used to be until it was filled in, as you can see, there's several buildings there. The last city agency to use it, I guess, was the Fire Department for some storage and training, really not used the last couple of years. Overgrown, open, outdated, or not usable equipment. So I'm just trying to put it before the Commission for ideas, Robert has some other ideas, which we'll, we'll see. What was that part of it?
That was a, that's where the pumps went.
So mechanically, there's nothing left, there's nothing left. Okay, obviously, this is the older of the two former pools. The newer pool, which we're more familiar with, has sat bacon for about six years. It's been vandalized, that's the way it looks today. I don't know if the slide has some value to go to sell it. That's the mechanical area of it, I believe all of it's been stripped. So completely unusable. In fact, the concrete is falling apart, the insides have been vandalized, including up through the false ceiling, the plumbing. It's just, it's a liability, as you can see there, all the wires have been cut. So we've heard in the past year or two, possible uses, of course, specifically Chaparral, RV parking, a dog park, some people want a pool. The question is, do we want a pool in that area, or do we want to try to? Or do we want to try to, if the city really wants a pool, do we consider one better placed? Um, but Robert had some ideas. Um, obviously, he's always looking out for his departments. But Robert, why don't you talk a little bit about what possible uses might be?
I thought the ones on East Gum Street could use up the storage. We could secure that fence, secure the building. We could put fire hydrants, the bigger valves. You know, PVC that doesn't need to be out in the sun and elements. Uh, some of those are big enough to put some ass stuff in. Some ass stuff, it's heavy enough, nobody can walk away with. You know, if it's work related, nobody's going to take it most of the time anyway. So it's, if we put up a fence, put some lights out there, I think it'll be good storage. For the equipment that was over, you know, we've got overabundance of some of that stuff, but where else? I think that would be a good place for, for storage. Nothing else but storage there. You wouldn't have to open any utilities or anything. There's just electricity for, you know, security camera or lighting, nothing else. And we used to have it secured back in the day when I ran that pool, we had, we had fans up around it. We really didn't have any vandalism and stuff there because there's so many dogs around. That would be for that one. Um, I think the one in Chaparral Park, the same thing we did with the one on Gum Street, fill it in. You know, maybe we create a locker room or something, uh, for the wastewater plant. The shower's already there, you know, kind of making it up a little bit to where the guys can take a shower before they go home instead of taking out crap from the plant. You know, home with them, they can, you know, change their, we can also use that for storage and possibly some of that stuff for that lab. Up in front of it, I think it'd be good for a dog park. Everybody wants a little dog park or something. I think there's enough food to make that go there also.
That could be in the parking lot or there's additional space on the west side.
Question on the lab expansion, if you used to do that, would there be any like chemicals and stuff up there?
Well, we talked about lab extension at the beginning, but then at the same time, it's better if we just leave it where it's at. Make that office over there, the lab that we won't be taking stuff across.
Okay, I was just wondering, because, you know, we, that's parking areas where we edge for the fireworks every year as well.
No, and that's what we thought. So we thought, we'll just leave the lab where it's at, just get that building, just the lab part and then make the rest of it, the, the office for the, uh, wastewater and the kind of little locker rooms.
So, um, I think there's an immediate need to secure it. That's why I say to reclaim it because it's basically abandoned. I mean, there's a fence around Chaparral Pool, but it's, it's cut, you can go right through it. Um, and then to come up with some kind of an immediate, uh, use for it. I think Robert's ideas don't involve a lot of cost. A lot of it can be done in-house. Um, so I don't think budgetarily, it's, it's a huge concern, but I just wanted to put it before the, the commission to start thinking about it possibly. Because right now, it's just open season, especially on the East Gum one. So, um, I don't think there's much left, but. So I think about it. I just wanted to put it before you. Robert had some good ideas, so.
And that one on East Gum, that fence was all up.
Yeah, it was. It just got the lack of use. It's nobody going and checking and using it anymore because when you guys did use it.
And the police did use it, it was checked on all the time and we didn't have that issue with that property.
But once you quit using something and you don't have people, and people notice, nobody's going in and out of there, let's go see what we can, and then you have anyone to stop.
As you know, um, street department took over, um, they had split that yard on H with the water department. Robert has moved into the old water yard, which is a little bit smaller. He's got a lot of big equipment and, and items, so there is room for expansion.
Only comment I want to make on the gum one, and I liked your idea, Robert, on the Chaparral one, was I would just plow it down and sell the property. I mean, why, why are we going to spend money on maintenance every year on something we're not even going to use? Uh, we got plenty of property over here behind Chaparral Park. I know some people had, uh, thought about the, the, some of the, um, some housing in that area. Uh, and it is a nice order for the houses that are already in that area. Uh, but I would just go over there and plow it down and, I mean, why fix a fence? Why, I mean, and to store more stuff so we can cut down more weeds next year and the following year? I mean, it's just going to cost, it's just a cost, it just becomes a, a cost over there. And I would prefer us just to.
Do you need that space for the big store?
We could use it for storage because we're crowded over here on this stuff. We keep getting stuff in and it's just crowded. We put up a new fence, new building and everything else and it's really crowded again. I mean, we already have the properties, so why spend anything else? It'd be minimal. All you need is a connectible out there. We'll do all the fencing, we'll do everything, I'll work on our stuff, you don't have to pay for any of that stuff. It's, it's all going to be there. I'll maintain it or water it or whatever, not water it, but spray it down. There's no, get some ground, grow the grass out there or anything like that.
I just kind of looked at it long-term, Robert. I mean, I mean, I, I mean, I like your energy, but I just saying, I look at it long-term. It's like, today you're here, tomorrow somebody else in there, and then all of a sudden, we're back to square zero. And, uh, we don't have a good guy running the show and, and we got weeds sky high, we've got people complaining. And, uh, and to me, it's a cost, it's a cost factor.
But wasn't there also an issue with the easement to get to that pool property through the other two properties? That it's only, it's only the city easement. It's, so we would have to get those permission from those owners to sell it, to make it a public easement. There's a lot more to deal with, um, if we changed what it's, if we don't have it no more. Um, we'd have to get those property owners to sign off on an actual access.
And then we have two large 40-foot containers out there, the shipping containers that would have to be moved to put somewhere. Is that, we use those for storage as well? How much total property do we have out there?
I think it's like.
Approximately, you don't have to.
Approximately two acres, I believe.
Is that all?
Yeah.
It may, because it goes further than the fence.
Yes, it goes further than the fence. I think it's around two acres.
I know the law, police chief, um, he was, he had it looked at one time and I think it's a little over two acres.
But, yeah, I just know the residents have always complained about it. I mean, they have, not, I don't blame.
Everybody's dumping stuff out there, some concrete out there, somebody's taking the dumps, he's dumping all the trash out there in the front.
Well, we've spent, I don't know how many days, we'd go out, we'd work, we'd clean everything up and all those tree limbs and stuff, all those have been moved. We cleaned all that stuff up. And then you go out there, somebody's torn the fence down and backed up and put tree limbs. I mean, come on, you take them over here for free.
That's all the way across town.
I know.
Really? You think I got to take a guess for that? Come on. And that's why I say wait out, Robert, on, on cost. I mean, I always look at it at a cost standpoint. I mean, if we can afford it today, yes, but I don't know if we can afford it tomorrow. You never know what.
The real deal would be the fact that, um, it's, it's a great piece of property, but it's not convenient. Because you know, you're not going to have somebody there every day. And like you said, so they're going to continue to do what they've become habit to. It's, it's be outside out of mind, it's a great place for storage, but then unless you have somebody keeping really good records on how many feet of polyline we have, how many valves we have. One valve missed, Pierce, somebody didn't get there. It's, it's better to keep everything in your own nest there. You get it spread out too far, I could see some disadvantages.
We could do that too at the other.
The existing pool, I mean, to me is if you're not going to repurpose it and you might want to fill it up because if somebody fall in it.
Well, that's what we, what we do is if you got it, we fit it in, you know, big.
That's the.
Does that area run area?
And that's a good storage yard, once you level it.
May I ask the commission, is there any thought or sentiment about trying to look at reopening, rebuilding the pool in that location?
I'm not drunk enough for that.
I don't think.
We have to have the name somewhere else.
We've looked at it so many times. It, I mean, it was built on a dump site that's been established. We already know that. We have the engineering that was done back then, which basically said, you know, there was pockets in that, in the field that contained things that were not, would not, uh, support any structure. So unless we want to, you know, clean it out 20 feet and fill it back up, that'd be silly.
Go ahead. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just did, I apologize. So my question is, on our splash pads, how much does it cost to put a splash pad in?
250 minimum.
$250,000.
Yes, sir.
That'll cost, we could put in four splash pads in four different areas of the community cheaper than we can start to think about putting the pool in. And like you said originally, Lubbix getting away from it, Hobbs is struggling with it. We're, then, then we got a water conservation project here that we're trying to conserve water. And we have a pool that about dures so many inches every day. So why not do a splash pad in four different areas? Because people say it's too hard to get to, so make it more convenient for different areas of the communities to be able to access splash pads. I think that would be a wider investment of our money than trying to rebuild what we got. And you're going to have to have personnel for lifeguards and everything else.
That's what it's up to Lubbix.
Just, that's money, just for, you know, for the chlorine and everything, it's just money.
So, like I said, the, the other ones that kind of make sense, we have a couple of different, uh, we have the splash pad on what, was there a poke?
No, Chaparral is the only one we have.
I don't think we have one.
It just had.
We thought about it.
Maybe that's what it was. Maybe that's what it was.
Now, we had a lot of discussion about putting one on D.
Well, I mean, we could put one on Avenue D, we could put one on Poke, we could plot it out where, you know, you're within so many areas of, of walking distance.
Even the youth center, we have the space.
Yeah, I mean, so we could do something like that and that would, that would service our community on a more even keel instead of one area. And then, you know, it's easier for your cops to drive by, it's a smaller area. It doesn't, I mean, to me, it makes sense, but.
Yeah, highly visible.
And it was 1.4 million 10 years ago.
Yeah, that's, that won't even get us started.
And then, and then the second time when they came back, it was more because they had taken all the copper out.
Oh, yeah.
Totally rewired.
Gutted and redone and, and as the mayor said, you, you got to be worried about the foundation.
Yes.
I think the consensus from the, uh, commission is, we have no interest in ever opening that facility, you know. I, I took the first year trying to figure out if we could. We just kept running into roadblock after roadblock. Um, anything that we do, uh, I, I like your idea of putting it with the, uh, the youth center area. You know, we've talked about purchasing some of that property, making additional, because then we're, not only are we providing education, um.
So we have outdoors.
We have outdoor activities because we really need to focus on some of that, you know, we could. We would love community input, you know, what would they like? Our splash pad's good enough. Everybody wants a pool. But the reason in the past that a pool was so popular was it was cheap babysitting. Okay, in reality, and then, you know, we can argue that or whatever, but in reality, that was what it was. And so are we willing to become a childcare facility again? Um, you know, and I'm certainly not against a pool. I'm not against splash pads. I'm not against anything that will serve our community, but we need to, whatever money we put towards it, we need to make sure that it's going to truly serve. And is it going to be accessible to everyone? Is it, you know, uh, I don't, I don't have solutions. We don't have those, so we're going to rely on, you know. But I think what you've asked is, we have no interest in the pool. Either one, obviously. Uh, both, that property out there has always been completely out of the way. Well, we all did. I mean, it's our, you're literally, you know, jumping up and down on our memories, but we jumped off the building into the pool. I mean, we did all of the stuff that you're not supposed to.
People like it.
Well, there's no pool to jump into, so.
Don't give them no idea.
Nope, don't be there.
Uh, but anyway, you know, in reality, it's, it's, it's a piece of property that we have that is hard to maintain and.
And currently, currently a liability. And I would ask, in the, in the case of the youth center, you know, we do have that 500,000 that's already been approved. And that side of town is kind of underserved in terms of parks and activities. You have all the schools, but on the city side, there's really no parks down. So that's just something to think about.
The lot on Gum is 2.96 acres, almost three.
Any further comments, so sir?
No, we appreciate the direction. We'll go from there and keep you updated in the future.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Murray, you have to sit down. You have to just head right on back upstairs.
Oh, no, this one. Uh, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, uh.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Shawn Robinson and Theresa Gray are here to follow up on the discussion about the hometown heroes flags on Main Street.
Okay.
I hit the button, sorry. Good evening. I look a little druggie and tired. I'm sorry. It's been a long week already. I only have one sample. I'll take last minute. Um, you guys asked what the banners would feel like. I think I wasn't there, I had a family emergency, I was at the hospital. Get off this, sorry. Um, I, I was listening on YouTube and caught everything, but that's going to be the sample material of the banner. Um, that's not the size. It's going to be a 24 by 36 or a 24 by 48. Um, I did ask for the warranty. I believe one of you guys asked about that, if the weather and the sun beat. They also said, they told us for a year. So as, the exact words he said was, we'll replace it and we'll take care of it for a year unless a tornado comes through town. So, um, that's the banner that I requested. As of today, we have updated some things here. Okay, sorry about that. Uh, one of the things that we've completed is the mission statement and goals. Um, we are looking at the board member rosters. Uh, the bylaws and governance of, um, this committee is going to go off the state, local and federal guidelines. Um, we'll go through there and get all that, make sure that we are up to date on that. There'll also be meeting agendas, meeting minutes, and, um, we also completed the nomination for, uh, nomination forum and the application guidelines. Um, while we were waiting for this meeting, we also did an application tra, a tracking sheet, a sponsored tracking sheet, community outreach plan, partnership agreements with MOUs, banner guidelines, financial records, annual reports and testimonies with impact stories, uh, for the website once we get it up and again, planning notes. Um, basically, what we're hoping for today, thank you, sir, is that we can answer any questions for y'all so we can get this at least started. Um, I would like to be on the action item for the next council. The reason is, is it's kind of hard to get these programs started without getting a agreement. I can't go out and get money. I can't get funding. I can't get anything about saying this program could be a possibility. Um, we did look at some of the stuff, uh, the lights, the light poles that we're looking at. From Jefferson and Adams, it's going to be two and two. Adams and Washington, one and one. East and West, um, Avenue A to B. Two on the west side, one on the east side. Avenue B and D, one on the west side. Three, uh, on the east side. Jefferson and Madison, two on the west side, one on the east side. Madison and Monroe, none on the west side, two on the east side. Monroe and Jackson, two on the west side and one on the east side. So, um.
So what's the total of that?
The total number of poles that we're having is 23. We're trying to get to 25. Uh, we're trying to make it even, but. I, I, I think pushing the poles out a little bit further will kind of discredit the fact that we're trying to do this and make downtown look a lot more pretty. And so I think when we kind of drag it out a little farther, it's kind of dragging the purpose. So I believe Main and D all the way up to Monroe and Jackson on Main. I think that's a kind of a perfect, because we have the new lights there, the roads looking pretty. Um, and it's the churches there and all that, so. That's what I'm hoping. I'm not asking for any commitment to the city of Wellington, just as, hey, you guys can use our poles. The next meeting, if you could do that, we can start getting funding, we can start getting resources, we can keep updating you guys and get to that project. Our main goal is by winter and spring to have these poles up. These are banners up.
We do have, um, so the, um, Lee County has also those same poles in that same area. Every year, um, they'll do fair and rodeo. Um, they're working with NMDOT right now to, because they are signs. So even though there are poles, they're in NMDOT right away. You still have to have permission for them to be, anything visible from an NMDOT right away. If it's not an on-premise sign, which means it's for that spot, which these are not on-premise signs, uh, you have to have an NMDOT approval. So, um, we do have that process that has to be looked at also. Um, you do have, like I said, the fact that Lee County would use those same poles, uh, once a year for the fair and rodeo. Uh, they are no longer wanting to do the banner all the way across the street. It is, they're using, um, I think it was 18 of the poles in the downtown area.
So our thoughts on that was to have the poles up, the signs up for a minimum number of months. We could always do that after they take down their signs after fair in order to have it up by winter and spring. We're not wanting to loop them up year round?
Those are using July through August, just what that's for us.
About the. You need their permission before we can give you permission.
Well, and I, so I did make some phone calls, council, about that. And it's kind of weird because the county's saying that these are our poles, this is our street. And then when I talked to the. City Highway, but, um, so I spoke to Wellington Main Street, I spoke to different organizations. I think the problem is, is we can go outwards, but it's going to. I think the problem is, is we can go outwards, but it's going to be hard to get the pole, I think it's going to be harder to get it outwards. If we go out Main and D, south towards Hobbs, it's just, I don't know. And if we have to take them down, we were hoping to do six-month increments, and that's what we're looking at, but we have to get a council before we can get this going, that's why I said.
That whole street is the state highway. You have to have their permission before you can have ours. It's a whole DOT, DOT permission.
Okay. So I'm a little lost. Where do I need to go, because I was told by New Mexico DOT, the light poles are ours. And I talked to them, and I gave them the New Mexico regulation that Santa Fe provided. New Mexico DOT said that the light poles have nothing to do with this unless it's obstructing traffic.
Okay.
So, and I even provided them the Santa Fe coordinates in the loving.
Have them write you that letter and send it to you, so you can bring it to us.
Well, that's what I'm hoping for, so I'm not, I think in this meeting, we're not asking for a commitment the next one, just so we can move forward and look at this, because everybody that we've talked to says the same thing. Well, we can't give you 100% unless y'all can move forward. And that's really hard for us. We're in a really stuck spot right now, because we want to get this going, but we don't have y'all's permission because of the light poles, but New Mexico DOT's saying it's not our light pole. So, I think what I'm hoping for is the next meeting, discussion item, just to say, we can talk about moving forward with this project, not 100% commitment.
So, you're correct. The light poles are the City of Lovington, but for whatever odd reason, just past that, to the east or west side of that, is the state right of way.
Yes, sir.
So, they own permission on the right of way. We have the light pole, so anything you stick out toward the street, you have to have permission from the state for. And so they just probably misunderstood, you were trying to put some on a light pole. They're like, I don't care about the light pole. But you're going to say, to some degree, it's obstructing that road vision.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, if you can get that letter from them guys, saying that they don't have a problem with your flags on our poles, I think we'll be good.
Another option that we provided, because I don't know, the banners, I don't think we presented it correctly, because we weren't getting the banners across the street. If it's a double, it's a one-sided banner towards the sidewalk.
So you're not in the right of way, it's out?
It's nothing to do with the street, it's in this side. And then, that's when the county, I know they're doing theirs, and I've talked to them about it, the old school banner they had was across the street.
Now, they're not doing those no more.
Yes. They're going to do theirs from the inside, because they want theirs on roadway. Ours will be on the outside towards the sidewalks. And the reason why we wanted ours on the sidewalks is because if it is you or your grandfather, we didn't want people in the street taking pictures of the pole with the banner, so that's why we want it on the sidewalk, so people can take pictures of their family members.
Okay, that was my misunderstanding?
No, 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 I haven't been here, and I'm tired, I'm half asleep. I could still get the permission, I think that's fine.
How high?
And that's going to be depending on, so before we do that, we have like four different banner sizes, and how high they were going to go, but we were hoping to have a committee approve for that first, because we wanted to have a board for that. But from what size they have, all the way from six to eight to 12 to 18, it depends on the pole size, and how high we want it to go.
Yeah. Because I know, like, the county ones, they are having to pay Lee County Electric, because we don't have a truck that can get up there, we don't have that type of equipment in the city, to get that equipment to put those signs up then, in the hurry.
Yes, sir. And that's the reason why, that's why I kind of wanted to move forward, because we kind of have an agenda we have. We wanted to get this committee going. As long as we can get some kind of commitment, we can get the board going, we can start getting sizes displayed, we can start talking to people, getting funding, getting approval. But right now, we're kind of getting that dead end, where everybody's saying, hey, who are you representing? How did you get permission? Have you talked to the City of Lovington? Have you talked to this? And we're like, oh, we're waiting on this, so you got to give the city of Lovington's permission. So, that's kind of where we're stuck right now. That's only the bad part about it. And I mean, I don't know other approach, I've kind of done all of our homework, you guys can see, but we have banners, we have the minutes, we have bylaws, and then we're just stuck on the point of, can we use the light poles? Possibly. And then, if we can, we can tell everybody, and then we can move forward.
Is Jack Johnson, you told him to be putting them up?
Yes.
He's got ball and dope, didn't he?
Are you?
Yes, I was, sorry, that's the last meeting, but I was told they would be helping us out with that. What we have to get with them, but that's going to be the next one. Lee County Electric, I guess there's some things going on. They didn't want to do anything with downtown, that's right now.
They won't be servicing them, I mean, like.
They don't work on our poles.
That's what I was told, so I just stayed out of that one, and I was like, okay, thank you, and we'll move around it. But that's what I'm hoping for. I think the, like I said, the approval isn't for money, or is it in commitment, saying you have 100% put on our light poles. It's just, hey, go ahead, you know, if everything looks good, we can have another discussion item before.
I'd like to see Shawn, your poles, what can I put them on? Is he going to take and get that to me?
Yes, sir.
So I can look at it.
Yes, sir. There's a, that's where we kind of messed up. There was probably about 12 of the black poles, the little pretty ones they put up. And then, between, we skipped the one, we skipped about two of them right there at the cafe downtown, because we figured they already had a bracket on there. Pretty sure that's where one of the brackets they're going to use for the county, you can tell. So we skipped those ones, and the rest of them, we just did the regular civil poles. But I can send it to you.
And how are they going to be attached, by bracket?
Yes, sir. There's a bracket, and then the company stands by warranty on those two, so if something happens, they say it's on them, but it has to be professionally installed. But it's four bolts, it's like a, I guess it squeezes the bracket, there's four bolts, a clamp, there we go. And then outside, they'll attach the one side, has two clamps, and then the banner that I showed you will be completely locked in. This will be a bigger banner, but it'll be completely locked in, and it'll be tight, so even when the wind blows, it won't, this won't move at all.
Will the clamp, you know, restrict the integrity of the pole?
That's what I was going to worry, the clamps, would they wear on our decorative poles? The other poles are solid and aluminum, but I'm not too worried about them getting damaged unto them, but the decorative poles, that could definitely damage those clamps. With our high winds, it could definitely damage. Yeah. They're antiqued metal, so if you're wearing those clamps.
Rub them inside.
Sure.
Shawn?
Oh, great, I'm sorry.
Some of the pictures that we saw were decorative poles, antique poles, so I'm sure we can ask and see if they have something, some kind of foam or something that protects the actual integrity of them.
Yeah, I know someone who had like the rubber on the clamp, so to keep that from doing that to the pole.
Yeah, and that's what he stated. He also, when I asked him about the poles, I said that it was very expensive, and we just redid our streets. He sent me a picture.
Those poles are very expensive, yeah.
He sent me a picture, and I didn't print it off for you guys, because it was really small. I asked him to send me a bracket, but it was kind of, hey, you're not an organization yet, we're not going to send you anything, because what's your organization? That's why I'm saying we're kind of stuck. I asked him for a full-size banner, and he said, this is the best we can do because you're not an organization yet. So, the brackets were really hard to get. The last thing he told me is I had to pay for my own money for the bracket, to bring it to you guys. So, but he said that, if you look on there, there is a plastic gasket, like a rubber gasket on there, and he said that the seals are supposed to last, I think like two to three years. And then something about the gaskets were like 30 bucks after they need to replace them every three or four years. But I didn't ask him per se about their damage, but I told him they're expensive, is it going to affect them? Is it going to break? And he said, no, he hasn't had any problems. And they do this age of life. This is Santa Fe, they have Rickard, he does it, Loving. So a lot of agencies around this do it, a lot of Minnesota. Any questions for me before I leave?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, because this is about the third time I've heard this, you know. How, what are the Hometown Heroes going to represent?
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, the way I understand it, it's primarily going to be a military person. Is that the truth?
That is 100%, sir.
Okay. And it's only that, right?
Only military, or is it first responders too, or is it, I mean, what does it encompass? It's only military?
Yes, and the program itself, it do allow first responders, but we are only doing the military. I feel like, I had a discussion with chief a few weeks ago, and the city manager. You could do firefighters and law enforcement. It's not that we don't respect them, I love my guys, my Lidos, the blue and red, but we don't want to put somebody on, spend all this money, and then they leave a month later, and then they're just sitting up there for a year. So, I think the best thing we were discussing is, let's just do our military veterans at this time. And we even brought up that we were not even going to do the City of Lovington, we're going to do the zip code of Lovington, because we were talking about it, and a lot of our residents don't even live in town. They live in the zip code. They buy, they spend taxes here, their kids go to school here. So we have a process when, if you get out honorably or other than honorably, you can come in, give us a photo. We're in the process of having two stages. About 10 applicants, the 15 applicants will be, you can do sponsors. So let's say if it's your grandfather, and you want to spend the money, you can put them on there when you pass the background. The other 10 and 15 that we want to do is to say that there's veterans that don't have that money, or they've passed away. Then that's when the local businesses step in, and they can support their veterans. And so that doesn't matter if you're broke, rich, you know, or you have 50 people sponsoring you, or no people sponsoring you. Your names will be up there, your photos will be up there, your branch will be up there. And it'll be up there for six months or a year, and then the next year, we'll do another 25, and we'll just keep doing that. So everybody that drives through the City of Lovington, through A2, all the way down Main, they see the beautiful courthouse, they see how pretty Main Street is, but also they see the people and the foundations of the City of Lovington, who allow the City of Lovington to be where it's at. And so, these veterans can be living or dead. And so, I just said, we need to get their name out and show appreciation. And I think this is the perfect plan. And I saw it, and I went to Santa Fe, and then I saw it in Loving, and I said, all right, let's just do it. Main Street looks pretty, let's go ahead and start this program. So, yes, sir.
Sir, in about three or four months, we will be completing a $1.6 million Veterans Memorial for all of Lee County, which is only a block off of Main Street. I totally get your idea of tying it into downtown Main Street, but would you think about possibly putting additional flags around the memorial, or something taking you off Main Street to the memorial? Or is it going to be exclusive of the memorial? Because, I mean, it's right there, and it's pretty much the same concept. Do you somehow want to tie it in, and you've got the museum right there? It could be something to think about.
The city manager has jumped on where I was heading, is, we are creating a memorial that is very similar to the idea, and then you don't have to deal with New Mexico DOT. We don't have to deal with the county and whatever. And it could be round the clock, or, you know, every year. Now, at this point, we don't have enough, I don't want to say flag poles, but for lack of a better word, flag poles are probably in this.
I'll get a number of the poles that they're going to.
And I just feel like that is the place, and then it can be dedicated to that.
Because it's houses.
And that, you know, and that was my, that was the reason I started this question. If it's going to be military only, let's stick everything we're in one space. And so, you get full benefit of people visiting that facility, names to tie to it and everything else, and possibly it becomes a memorial for everyone as they go along. And nobody's exempt from, due to monetary or whatever, from being presented there. Now, I realize it's a different concept, but I mean, we're already down this path, and it's hard to jump behind something that can ease, easily, it's not a good word, can be accomplished in conjunction with. But I really, I'm not here to rain on your parade. I'm just saying, we're already spending, you know, the county has committed a lot of money, we've committed a lot of money, and we can help you get there much easier than we can try to get it done on Main Street, but.
So one of the things that we have considered is doing it around the memorial, but we were also thinking of, as you're coming into town, we're going to have the signs, even if we come out of pocket, they do that a lot, of putting arrows, like, come to our memorial, come see this. We like the idea of putting flags around the memorial. It's just a matter of, that project still isn't done yet. We don't know, like, the number of flag poles, we don't, or the poles, light poles.
I can get that to you tomorrow, or tonight, if you'd like.
But we would still like the Main Street to be the interim. Now, you're trying to, would that be the city covering those poles at the veteran site? Because then you could say, we'll put our Purple Hearts and our Medal of Honors there, or our desks, like Mr. Aaron Austin, you know, those commemorating. And then we have the family sponsoring the ones on the outside. That's, you know, that's something that would be.
There is a group, there's a committee for that, and I am not a member of that committee.
Carol Parish.
Yeah, but I'm sure they would really enjoy you giving the, I know you've presented, that's why I said I've heard it three times, and the concept is fabulous. It's just maintenance and every, all of the issues that you're running into, you know, maybe we need to look and say, okay, it'll be freed up if we do this. Now, the first thing to do for that would be to talk to the committee. We already have the plan in place. What would it take to add? If everybody's, you know, gung ho about it, then light poles are one thing, but poles are another, you know, I mean, we don't have to run electricity of them or anything like that, but.
Right, and there'll be some poles around the park that match the historic ones on Main Street. And I would just add that, you know, we would probably want to check in with the county as well, since.
Absolutely.
It's, you know, it's in Lovington, but it's for all of Lee County.
So I think the main project of it is, the main goal of this project is, if somebody, when we get the veterans memorial up, and the military memorial, people are going to go because they know that's a memorial. They're going to go left. This point of the project is, people are going to drive through town, and they're forced to see people who are citizens, and there's no detour. I understand that there's a lot of projects with poles. But at the end of the day, I think, maybe it's, I take it personal, but I feel like the veteran community is very underspoken here. So I think that getting some, asking for these poles, that doesn't cost the city anything. It's going to come out of the citizens' pockets. It's just, hey, can we put them up? Can we support our veterans in town? I mean, I get the liability of the highway, but when the highway says it's not in their jurisdiction and stuff, I think that's where we're stuck at. So, that is our last proposal, is to put it there, but the main point of each city that's doing this project, it's not where you're taking a detour to see it, it's you're forced to see it. So, that's the biggest thing. Yeah. Two more questions?
All right, well, thank you. Appreciate it. All right. No, this is a.
Still on action.
This would be.
We have a public hearing. This is Shannon's house. We're going to open a public hearing for the ordinance 6112. That's not right. 612, excuse me. Restricting commercial trucks on portions of Main Street.
It'd be a week.
I'm sorry.
It'd be a week.
It'd be a week.
We did, we did.
We got a lot of leads on this one anyway.
Okay, on ordinance 612, about halfway through the ordinance, there is an error that says between Avenue N, which I think was discussed at the commission meeting about whether it's going to be N or K. So it does say Avenue N there, and it should say Avenue K to the south in Dearborn Street to New Orleans. It says Avenue K anywhere else, and that is what we have in the ordinance, is for to detour at Avenue K.
Yeah, as Shannon said, the main question is, we're looking from guidance from the commission, because there's been discussion about both Avenue N and K, they both have different merits or drawbacks. I know Crystal had some input, so we're happy to go with either one. Just know that we need an ordinance for Main Street with the trucks.
Well, my thoughts, this being a public hearing, we kind of have to have it specified. I mean, if we're opening a public hearing, then, yes.
Yeah, I think, according to Shannon, it was a clerical error that it said "and" instead of "K", the rest of it says "K". If you go to "K" versus "and", you're inclusive versus exclusive. So you're putting more into that than they can use versus less. So, I would say, just take note of the error, and only one spot in there where it has that, and go ahead and proceed with the hearing. And then certainly, it's open to discussion for, you know, consideration of K, or N, or any other street that I think is going to be warranted, but. any other street that I think is going to be warranted, but I think we can go ahead and move forward, noting that clerical error.
Is there any comment, does anyone from the public...
Is there anyone present that would like to comment on this? We just need to...
Big love.
Okay.
Come forward.
You have to come forward, you have, not your name, you know how to, go ahead.
My name is Tim Boyzner. I've been, I've been trying to get this thing going for a long time. I want these trucks out of this town. City limits is city limits, the only ones I want in this town are delivery trucks, period. Because I am tired of sitting there, walking, driving down Ninth Street, seeing semi parked in driveways, on the side of houses, on the streets, and they're tearing our streets up, tankers and everything else. And I'd like to see, because they got, we got bypass all the way around this town, I want them on that bypass, and out of this town. Because they're just tearing it up, and the taxpayers' money is being wasted on the, on the roads. Be, and the semis are tearing them up. Yes, I understand delivery trucks, they're exempt, okay? I, somebody orders something at their house, and it can't be delivered except for semi, okay? Understandable, okay? Bob's has a delivery over there, Domino's has a delivery over here, semi trucks, understandable. But they're not in there almost twenty-four seven, and they're not parked across the street from someone's house while they, they go across the street, or in front of their house, and spend the night. Or I, in the alleys over there, parked the last five days, over there on someone's property. You know, "Oh, Mr. Mayor," and this stuff like this. I'm always calling about these semis, and I'm complaining about it. And I think it's time for us to make an ordinance to get them out of this town, like every other city in the nation. And it's way stupid to have them, the tractors parked beside someone's house, and in front of their house all weekend long. Because they'll come in on Friday, after hours, and they're gone before seven o'clock Monday morning, but they sit there parked, and that's ridiculous. With that said, I say...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, seeing no one come forward, and...
Ah, oops.
Oh, never mind.
I'm going to try to talk, I don't have much voice. My name is James DeChant, I live here in Levington. Like Tim said, the trucking industry, I drove a truck over here for thirty-eight years. Two things I did in my thirty-eight years, you gotta respect local laws, respect state laws, and do my job. I got problems with trucks coming to them over there, they work at Duke Energy, bring your trucks right down the street because you're too lazy to drive the truck back to the yard, drive your car back. We got another day, a week ago, I just got back from New Orleans, a week ago before I left, a brand-new road, we got seventeen foot, ten inch oversized load coming through downtown. With escorts and everything else, we don't need this, we're going to have everything to work on. I'm all for trucks being banned from the city. I mean, like Tim said, we, as a whole, can't afford to keep repairing these roads with that spent. You looked at the outlay of the roads, what we're spending versus keeping the trucks out of town. I mean, you got a lot of drivers that have no respect. I've seen drivers in this town run over fire hydrants, of course, because they don't know how to drive. This new breed of drivers that we have, if we're driving, I hate to say, I mean, they don't understand basic rules. I drove through, we got a good bypass here. I've driven oversized on the north bypass around the hospital before. It's a little rough, and get a little close on that one power line, right around the corner, but it's, it's a great bypass to come downtown. And with that being said, and I'm going to avoid some kind of trouble, I would like to respectfully see trucks, at least than ever did, within a ten-block radius or twenty block radius of downtown. Because I understand all the subs, I've heard of diesel buses that took use to have them, but then again, just a little while ago when I was coming back here, you got a one-truck going home, I tell my school over there, you know, going home, going to park the truck, be there for the night again. With that, the panel, tear up our road, what you're doing. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any discussion from the commission? Anyone else from the... Seeing no one?
Yes, sir, just wanted to make sure, because we're going to go to an action item. I did not hear any verification from any of the commissioners which street we were ending with, or starting with. We started with K, or we started with N?
You want to talk about the pros and cons of N and K?
She did on her last meeting.
Just to...
So, the, the deal with moving it to K is that it does give her direct access to Commercial Street, so that way there's less, if you end it at N, they have to turn around, they're going to end up using those residential streets right in that area first, second, and there's all the houses right back behind there, so we already have enough issues with those trucks being in that area and using the residential streets, so trying to make it to where they do have a direct access, so then they can't say, well, we don't have no way to get back to where we need to be. It just, well, hopefully they lessen the issue of them being in the residential streets.
So, Avenue K...
Yeah, now, and then my comment was going to be, I was in a...
Yeah.
Prefer the recommendation of Crystal, that, that's pretty much all I was going to say.
And as Crystal has pointed out previously, on the north side, if they miss the Deer Duff, they could still shoot over to Commercial on Van Buren. So we're covered on the north end by Van Buren, on the south end by Avenue K, to get to Commercial.
But our approach...
But they'll send down Polk Street.
They could also, but yeah, Polk, Polk shoots all the way out to Seventeen.
That's what I'm saying, if they miss Deer Duff, that's all they got is Polk.
That's what they have is Polk. Polk, and then Van Buren goes over to Commercial.
It's good signs right there.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Polk doesn't go across the, is Vegas.
Commercial?
Goes to Seventeen.
No, they're talking about, if they miss to go off Deer Duff, they're going to have to come in and go down Polk.
All the way to Van Buren, come back around.
And that will totally tear it, Polk, where the...
Or if you wanted to, you missed the Commercial turnoff...
Yeah, okay.
North of the Shamrock, you could get over east of Van Buren to Commercial.
Okay.
It's a start.
I mean, you're going to have to circle around.
It reads Avenue, okay, correctly, it would read Avenue K to Deer Duff, is that what we're saying?
It does everywhere, except for one spot, it says Avenue N.
No, I know, no, I'm, I'm asking, i- if everything was right, it would say Avenue K to Deer Duff.
Yes.
Except for local deliveries, trucks over...
I know, but we're talking about if they miss, okay, if they miss, then it doesn't matter where we started.
Correct.
Well, it's anywhere between Deer Duff and K, they can be given a citation for not having a local delivery.
Well, I know, but we were talking about Van Buren being an access, if they miss, we're wrong, I mean, yeah...
They're going to drive straight through town anyways, so...
If they miss and they realize they messed up, at least this gives them an exit before they hit the historic new Main Street.
On one end of town. Well, or Van Buren...
And are you going to go like on Google Maps and open that as...
Van Buren, then the new is...
By a block or two.
In DOT, I'm asking too, the same thing, how can we fix Google Maps? It's, Google Maps is its own thing.
I'm going to work on that, I don't like that.
Don't understand how we can get that fixed.
Well, that's, that's, that's...
Because that's where most Google Maps...
Well, wait, the reason I say that is because if I, if I set in a code on Google Maps, in Andrews, it automatically takes me around Loop nineteen ten.
Yes, it does, yes.
It's just, New Mexico...
There's a way to get it in there, we just got to figure out how.
Yeah, but...
We'll figure it out.
But yeah, like, most of the states that require you to trust to go around the loop or something like that, they will make them go around, but we don't have that.
However they're doing it, I mean, even Jackson right now, that's under construction, on the Google map, it's red. So I don't know who's putting that in.
So it's updatable.
Yeah, it is updatable, I just don't know who and how.
Well, even, even on C one, in the middle of absolute nowhere, when the truck traffic's backed up two and a half miles on a good day...
It tells you to go alternate route.
Yeah, there is no alternate route. Unless you know, you know me there, why?
Individual users turn it in too, that's why I use mine, because those they speed drop ahead and stuff like that, because individual users turn it in. Whether I know where I'm going or not, I turn it on just for that.
And some of the other drivers input and stuff.
Yeah, that's on that one driver, that allows you to do that.
Yeah.
That updates itself just from other drivers.
That's right.
Okay.
I'll find you sooner or later.
Cheese? Okay, whatever comes out of this, what is your plan?
Tickets, tickets, tickets.
Up to five hundred.
Do we take it?
I'm going to start with this one, we're doing the rest of the ordinances. But it's, we do a couple blitzes, and the word will get out.
I know, I'm just...
And not ever at that Main Street school zone, in the morning.
Because I tried to get the state to move that, that school zone to Taylor, because it being the kindergarten right there, there's no kids that actually physically walk into school anymore. It's like prison, so...
And the Taylor one, there's always kids walking across over there.
And every fly, yeah. Everyone across there.
So I'm going to go football, if they're going to die.
We don't have it.
So, my, my plan would be, but whatever we decide to do, is make sure that it's, we have signs, advertising, given every opportunity, you need to turn right here, this is your last opportunity, where you're going to receive a citation. They're going, they're not going to come to Van Buren. I drove a truck as well, I said, you, that's all you do is read signs, and you don't want to go into a community where you're, you're going to be sitting there with a police officer just waiting around that corner.
Okay, and the signs will list the fine amount?
Correct. So, it'll, it'll, a lot of that track is on Main Street.
What do we want to check on in the night?
Yes, we've, we've got plans for some new, big signs, multiple level signs, this is your last chance, signs.
They're reflective, you can't put, you can't, flashing lights on them, because they are still on, in DOT, right?
Yes, new signs are very...
If we are saying, if we are salvaging N because of Allsops, then...
We're just saying...
No, no, I'm just saying, if, if we're not, okay, Deer Duff is my example, okay? We, we're calling that basically our plan, okay? The only reason that we're not calling a Commercial on this N is because of Allsops fueling station, right? Right? Well, like, if we're making the exception for Allsops fueling station, then that area is the, I mean, they, they can't go past the Allsops fueling station. They have to pull into Allsops, and pull out of there, and go back the other way. If we're giving them a, an out past Allsops, then the same thing would have to be done on Deer Duff. I mean, because we either said, this is the limit, and that's it, or we're going to be continuing...
Well, that's why we said K is the limit.
Yeah, but when you fuel your vehicle at Allsops, and you pull it out onto the road, you're thinking, I got to go back south, I can't go across to Love Street, I can't go...
Exactly. I only have one issue, one way to go. I go out here, I turn left on R, I go straight, or I turn right on Urlecker, which is R. Okay, that's my, whatever, and if you're sitting there saying, this is your option, they're going to go back that way.
CEO drivers do not take it, because it affects the ground.
But also, from a truck driver's standpoint, it gives them the option to go in town and fill up, and that, turning off the truck drive pass, going on K, getting on Main, pulling in there and filling, instead of going all the way around to the tractor supply, driving back that way, and then filling up and then drive back out.
And yet, coming up south and trying to turn into that station, that's not, many of them, most of the ones that come in, come in from the north, they get that station. So if they're able to come in off Commercial on K and come into that station, then head on out.
At least they got an option to fill, because there's no other Maverick, that's the only other place, this, this way they'd have two options, I mean...
Yeah, because also if you just say it N, then you are cutting off anyone that's coming from the north end to get fuel there at the Allsops. If you leave it at K, they can come across on K from Commercial, to get the fuel and head on out again. We're just trying to not inflict issues with Allsops, with their, you know, we don't want to cause them...
Yeah. Thing that's going to Levington is we got to support it somehow.
I think it's an ordinance, we're going to be readdressing in the near future, is what I think.
You're good either way.
I mean, that's all I really got to say.
Sure.
All right. Um, have we closed the hearing?
Close the public hearings.
Let's close the hearing, yes. And that will allow us to move on to action items.
Yay.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for ordinance six twelve, restricting trucks and other commercial vehicles on portions of Main Street, establish, establishment of a no-truck thoroughfare zone. And just so that we make sure that the paperwork is correct, and it is from Avenue K to Deer Duff.
Yeah, I'll motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing ended. Shannon?
Commissioner Boe?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh forty-three, establishing public meeting dates and holidays.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on this resolution, I'm assuming Shannon or Veronica, I'm not sure which one.
Um, this is, um, what we do every year is crime, and I did have a list there of one, of the boards that we do set the, the meeting dates on. I listed it in the stamp summary, it's the City Commission, the County Museum, we've got Lodgers Tax Board, Parks and Rec, Library Board, Senior Citizens, and Levington, planning zoning. We're also establishing holidays, holiday dates for the fiscal year.
All right, any discussion? Hearing ended. Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Boe?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Okay, I, I have a question before he makes the motion on the next one, on the choices. Because last year we got in a bind about putting an ETZ person on the regular board, that was an ETZ person, and we didn't realize it, so is everyone other than Marla regular, and she's the only ETZ, or do you have any others, or? Have we verified, do we know?
Um, it's like I didn't hear from Red Shaw or Manstia, I sent y'all there, all the people that were interested. I did have Marion Red Shaw and George Manstia, and they didn't fill out the application, so I'm not sure what their address is.
Okay.
Now Larry Ryan-Miller, I, I believe he is in the city limits, I, I don't remember where he lives...
Don't know where he lives, there at Seventeenth and, or not.
I don't think they, they don't live.
They don't live there anymore.
They don't live there anymore.
I don't worry.
Seventeenth and New D?
Because, because I, I think, we don't know where people live, we need to.
Right. So, so I, I was thinking, maybe we could wait until, we could wait until next meeting to vote, and that way we would have all the planning and selling interest, as well as the Parks and Rec. And that way we could see what, where they would give best.
Okay. Yes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like.
Go with that idea, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table a resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero forty-four, until next meeting.
A motion, take, table this.
Oh, I'm sorry, but we will not accept no more nominations, right, or, because nominations have already.
No, we're just getting more information.
Yeah.
Just, just as long as, as long as that's noted, that we're, we're just gonna get information on them, once they submitted their name up to that, to closing date.
Well, we haven't really closed it, I mean, people can still contact.
Did you have a posted period? Did you have a posted closing date?
In case you missed that. But today was a note, today was the final date, though.
Did you have a posted?
We're gonna make the decision, so do we need to say anything out of that, Patrick, or?
If, if we, if we didn't have a closing date, I don't think we have to overcut anything on today, five o'clock.
So, so maybe put a closing date on your post for like Monday or something, and then make sure we know where everybody lives, and.
Yeah, I, I really, I haven't heard anything that came in today, I was getting a few things last week.
Yeah, I think it's only fair for the ones that already did their dealings.
And so, and the ones that I did send applications to, I really wanted them to fill those out, and they just didn't, they expressed their interest anyhow, but I didn't give the applications back, so, but I, I would, I would think you'd still wanna consider them. But we do need to know where they live, as far as losing any E T Z.
Both boards.
Okay. You answered it.
Yes.
I'm just saying, the only thing I don't like about it is that if they didn't do the paperwork like they were supposed to, submit their name, then it's void, it's void. And if we're gonna continue like this, we're gonna have to do this on all the board appointments from this point forward, we're gonna make this type of, uh.
We just.
Our change hours.
Yeah, change it our way, like.
For these two boards, it, it matters where they live.
It does matter where they.
Yeah, it does matter, but.
The other boards, I don't know.
The only reason I'm asking is because the last time we sent anyone, we put a P and Z person in a regular spot, which we were unaware of, and we had to come back and re-vote and review, so I don't wanna do that again, I'd just like.
No, no, I understand your point.
That's the only reason I'm.
But I understand that, that, I mean, people know that, I mean, they're required to put a certain amount of paperwork in, they need to put the paperwork in, doesn't it?
Yeah, if they're really interested, you would think that they would do that.
Yeah, and then for us to just say, hey, uh, maybe, give you a couple of extra days, you know, just like, I just don't wanna keep that path.
That's why I was letting, I wanted to let y'all know in advance, that we, who had submitted the application this week, who was just interested in the present, submitted an application. And I really don't know these people, I, I know a couple of them.
None of the three returned their applications.
So.
The three new people.
And then, of course, we have a member, Price, and Marla Price, and Clayborne Griffin, that expressed their desire to be appointed.
Okay.
Different positions are being.
Two, so, I mean, if y'all wanna do that, if you want to continue them on, because the other people didn't turn in their paperwork, but if you don't set deadlines and things, I don't know, you can hold them while.
Did we second Marla's on the table?
We have a second, but we haven't voted yet. We, because we're in discussion.
That's fine, we got lost where we were at.
No, that's okay, obviously. All right, any further discussion? Okay, the motion on the table, on, or is, we're going to table it until next meeting. All right.
Okay.
So that's what you're voting on, at this point. Shannon.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
No.
Mr. Tridio?
No.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Boat?
Your turn.
Chopping blood for you.
No.
Okay. We're not tangling it.
All right, so we need a new motion.
Yes.
Well, my motion got shot down, I'm not gonna do two of them.
I don't even know what names are that.
Marla and.
Marla and.
Marla's related.
Wait, 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 wait.
E D C, so.
Appoint those two.
And who's the other?
Clayborne.
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 So it'd be, uh, Ms. Marla Price for the extra territorial zoning, and Clayborne for the, Griffin for the other seat.
What my commissioner would like to say is, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four, appoint members to the Parks and Rec Board, being Marla Price for the E T Z, and reappoint Clayborne Griffin, is what he'd like to say.
And Marla.
I'll second that. I said Marla Price for the E T Z, and appoint Clayborne Griffin.
Yeah, appreciate that.
And get a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing now, try it again, Shannon.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
No.
I thought you were mad at Craig, oh my God. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for twenty-five, oh forty-five, adopt policy for credit, debit credit cards or electronic transfers as E M S.
Okay, we have a motion, take it for. Resolution twenty twenty-five oh four five.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Oh, thank you, I was gonna ask who.
Yeah.
Headin' this up.
We've been advised by D F A that city has a non-existent or outdated policy in terms of how we accept payments, as you know, we have about a half a dozen points of sale or departments like E M S, planning and zoning, M V D, youth center, cemetery, water department, which accept credit cards, debit cards, and A C H transfers. So this policy, which was recommended by D F A, Michael Steininger, defines, uh, what our policies are, what a credit card, debit card, automatic clearinghouse, what all that means, uh, it explains, explains that we will charge fees for that convenience, um, and this is something that we've already been alerted from D F A that we need to have this done, uh, for all, not only for our audit, but for our, uh, D F A quarterly and annual reports. And like I said, this is a boilerplate policy that is up to date and recommended by D F A.
Even the cop drugs. All right, any further discussion, question? All right, Shannon.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Tridio?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Boat, are you good with the next motion? As far as, you got the paperwork you need and everything like that? Okay, good. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for a resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero forty-six, approve P S A between City of Levington and the Levington Chamber of Commerce.
Sir. We have a motion, a second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, as you well know, um, it's the time of year to review, renew our public, our professional service agreements with our four-service organizations. Uh, I have communicated in going over their professional service agreements with the Commissioners, some questions and concerns I had. Um, we did take off Levington Main Street and the museum for tonight, because we're still working those problems out, and it was too late, the agenda had already been submitted for publication. In the case of resolution oh four six, um, basically it calls for the same terms of, as last year, um, the chamber does reside in a city building, E D C would be the same terms as last year, the funding for both, while derived from separate sources, would be fifty thousand dollars each, it represents no change from the previous year. I would also propose keeping it the same for the other two organizations, but that's going to be on the next agenda. We have representatives from Chamber here, and not E D C.
Not E D C.
E D Cs, I know we're getting ahead of resolution, E D Cs, the only change was, they now are headquartered in a city building. Last year at this time, they were still at, yeah, Lecon.
All right, any further discussion?
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Tridio?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, make one. Try it again, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for twenty twenty-five dash zero forty-seven, approve P S A between City of Levington and the Levington E D C.
Okay, a motion and a second. Excuse me, sorry.
Dave, did we, did we ever, uh, talk to them about taking care of the grounds in front of their facilities, like Chamber and E D C, contributing to something other than just staying there? We haven't talked to them yet financially about contributing, um, I know Robert and Parks have been taking care of Troy Harris, um, I believe in front of the Denton Building, was that an adopt a spot issue?
Yes.
It was, right?
Yes.
Well, I got it signed up in front of ours, too, you know.
Yeah, I don't know, some of the adopt a spots have not worked out, but Parks has got it covered, but Denton Building is covered by Chamber Adopt a Spot program, so, but we can, I mean, if you would like, um, as I mentioned last meeting, you know, all three organizations in the, Troy Harris did contribute towards a new air conditioner, so they might be amenable to the idea. Right now, we've had Parks taking care of it. I'd say, I think we just do enough to consider, uh, to consider us continuing to do more, because the last time it happened, it's like when COVID happened, and we didn't have no funding, and then all of a sudden everybody's getting mad because we weren't taking care of the facility, but nobody was willing to ante up, uh, and lend a hand, everybody was still depending upon us to do everything for them, and, uh, and like right now, like I stated before, we're financially healthy, and, but the day we're not, I, their expectation's gonna still, they're gonna still ask us to do it, and then we're gonna be, explain to why we're not, and then they're gonna be mad, so that's the last. So Main Street, E D C, Chamber. They could contribute something, I mean, just clean up their front, I mean, they, you know, they throw cook bottles up front, trash out their car, their customers do. Yeah, at least clean up, right? Yeah. And Main Street is responsible for, uh, the storybook park behind the library, and they just did clean it about two, three weeks ago.
I'm assuming we're not trying to add that into this.
No, sir, I'm just, just for them to be aware.
Discussion.
Last time, it was just a big deal, and they made a big deal out of it, and I was kinda, nobody helped out when it was.
Because I, I know Main Street's always kept the storybook and the brand actually, they keep, they upkeep those parks safe, and the new flowers, they, they do all that cost themselves.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing now, Shannon.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. Tridio?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Oh, I didn't hear it either, but.
He's asleep, he's, you know.
Yes.
Sorry, I was just struggling with the next one. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero five zero, approve drought proclamation.
Okay, sir. We have a motion and a second. Uh, yes, sir.
On this, uh, Mayor, as a Commissioner, actually, uh, last time I talked to y'all, we considered under a barbed route, we actually dropped further down to lonely drive, so we're not in, it's a bit of drought condition anyway.
So we really aren't, we wouldn't have any legal right to put any kind of a proclamation or any kind of restriction on any fireworks, but we brought it to y'all so that y'all still have the option to, to vote.
In case everything completely dries up between now and July.
I'm just making sure that Betty doesn't have a queer shot at you.
You can't buy law.
You're gonna say no.
I know, I'm just reading y'all, I'm back there.
I know.
We're gonna restrict my water, we're gonna. Yeah, he had a whisper in my ear, Betty gonna say yes for this proclamation.
Okay.
Bottle rockets in her pocket.
Exactly. All right, any further discussion? Shannon.
Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Everybody gets the same.
Mr. White?
No.
Mayor Roberts?
No.
Mr. Boat?
No.
Mr. Tridio?
No.
All right, Ms. White?
I'd like to make a motion to make deals.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Miranda, I know while we're considering, because it's the financial report and, and the bills. All right, on the, this package you gave us.
The budget.
The budget package, yes. My, my question is, we, we separated out the one point eight million for the animal control. Just, why did we do that for that particular?
He wasn't here to hear that was.
Oh, okay, good catch, it had been brought up, that is actually.
It was allocated in the wrong, wrong spot.
Yeah, if that's the housing incentive program, that's two payments of nine hundred thousand, so that's in the wrong category, and that is gonna fix it.
Sorry.
No, that's a good catch.
Well, I did.
Yes, sir.
Two weeks late, but yeah. You were testing, okay, all right, sorry.
Yes, sir.
First opportunity. That was the only question I had. Right, yeah, I was like, holy cats. You have to put her in charge of some other areas.
Action Hut. I think everybody's good to kill me.
I'm sorry, I, usually, Mr. Boat. You're chilling along here.
Okay, we waiting on you?
Sorry about that, again, there you go.
You leave one, baby.
Right, I'm telling. Shannon.
Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Tridio?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
With that, yeah, I didn't, we're exhausted, we are, thank you.